Okay, so hopefully we're all ready to go. I'll call this meeting to order. We're now meeting as committee of the whole and it's February 10th, 2022. Is there any declaration of interest, customary or otherwise? Seeing none, once again, I would say that one does come up during the course of the meeting. You are certainly able to declare at that time. I am number three is a delegation. Hopefully our delegate is presented. Paul, line now.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, our delegation is scheduled for 10:45 and we do have Jill on Bock who will be joining us at that time as well. So if I can just maybe start with the report so we can go back to the delegation.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. We'll turn next, I guess, to item four A, which is the University of Gulf Students Project. I believe that that's going to be introduced by Scott Taylor, but it's being moved by Councilor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Keating. Scott, are you going to do the introduction?
Yeah, thanks, Warden Hicks, and good morning, Warden, and members of council and anyone tuning in today. So I'm here with my colleague Linda Swanson today, just to give council a preview of two exciting new projects that we're partnering with the University of Gulf Students on. So I'll be speaking to one project, which involves a guide around density, and Linda will be speaking to a project which involves a guide around green development standards. So in this case, the county is partnering with these two teams of University Gulf Students, and as council may be aware, we've done this on a number of occasions, both with the University of Gulf, the University of Toronto, and the University of Waterloo. And it's a fantastic opportunity for the students to get some quasi-real-world planning experience, but also meet the requirements of their Masters of Planning project. And certainly, as a county, we are so thankful for the efforts and the research they provide to the county. And we've had numerous examples in the past of fantastic work that they've done. I should clarify that this work is being done at no cost to the county. Similar projects would range, if we were to go to a consultant, between $25,000 and $35,000. So this is really a wonderful opportunity for the county. So with that being said, I'll speak to the first project, and the first project we've affectionately titled is "The Density is Not a Dirty Word Guide." And in this case, we've got a team of four students, Andrea, Maria Christina, Shivani, and Abigail, who are working on this project, and they're exploring both the benefits and the necessity of density in our communities. And when I say density, I'm speaking specifically to residential density. And certainly, the timing of this report could not be any better, because, you know, as most of council will be aware, the province released their report on affordability from the task force earlier this week. And one of the recommendations that was first and foremost was the requirement for greater density. And it's not an option anymore. It's simply a need. And what we want to accomplish through this guide is a bit of an educational piece to explain to people in our communities about the both benefits of density. And some of those benefits might come from an affordability perspective or a walkability perspective, but also the necessity of density. And again, that relates back to affordability, but it also relates back to the efficient use of land and infrastructure. And, you know, we've had these conversations within our communities a number of times. And certainly, with some of the larger planning applications we're seeing across the county, I would say we're seeing more and more trepidation from neighbors and people in our community than ever before with respect to the size and density of some of these developments. And so we really see this guide as an educational piece that could be used as an entire guide, but also that we're hoping the students can develop some infographics and some short pieces that we can pull out from this guide and help provide that educational benefit to our residents and hopefully take away some of the fears that might be associated with some of these future developments. One of the things that we see them doing here is researching other municipal approaches. And what we've been very clear on with the students is that the municipal approaches need to be fairly broad in this perspective, because a new development on full municipal services will look different than a development in one of our communities or one of our towns or villages that doesn't have full municipal services. So it needs to consider a wide range of density there. And it needs to look at things from both a planning perspective, but also from an asset management and municipal finance perspective. So the students are on target to complete this work in early April, and it's our hope subject to council's timeframes and the students' own timeframes that we can have them back around that time to present their findings to council in this regard, after they've had a chance to chat with people throughout our community and dig into this topic further. So with that, I'll turn it over to Linda, and she can take you through the green development standards.
And good morning, Warden and council. And so certainly, there are some strong connections between the work of the density students and those who have volunteered to support our work around exploring green development standards. So as council would be aware, the county's draft climate change action plan is nearing completion. And within that draft is the proposal to explore what a green development standard could look like across Gray County. And so what the students are supporting us with, similar to the density project, is a jurisdictional scan of what other communities with similar governance structures and climates and development patterns have implemented in regards to supporting green development and paying particular attention around the governance and implementation. There are a number of existing green performance standards available for new construction that have been, you know, our technical standards, which support making sure the buildings we build are good for the environment in the long term. And so what we've asked the students to do is scan those existing standards and think about them in the context of Gray County. And then specifically, given our two-tier structure, again, scan other jurisdictions and also provide advice to us around what an appropriate implementation mechanism might be, where the county is able to work with our member municipalities. And so one of the things that we've spoken to the students with is the need to really consult broadly in this process and make sure that whatever is being recommended or explored works across the diversity of our member municipalities and really can become the foundation, as Scott mentioned, for an RFP going forward to flesh out the project fully. But we're really excited, as Scott said, to have this initial support from the master's students and are confident that they'll give us a good foundation around what green development standards might look like here to move forward from. And I think with that, we're probably happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Scott and Linda. Council, are there any questions? I do not see hands with that said.
I think Counselor Mill and Counselor Robinson, as well as Counselor Borden, you'll have.
I'm sorry, I'm on my screen too. My apologies, folks. I was looking at screen number two, so in order, I see Counselor Mill. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just a couple of questions. The first one regarding the density project. I'm wondering, Scott, is there any indication that the students might be having a look at the European experience? They've been dealing with density for probably a few hundred years now, and I expect there's some lessons to be learned there. And the other question was for Linda regarding the green development standards. And I'm wondering how that would relate or how they may relate to the building code, because ultimately, that's what most developers will build to, is to building code standards. Anything else is probably nice to have, but push come to shove, the building standards rule. So those are my two questions. Please, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, maybe I'll go first with the density one. Great suggestion, Counselor Mill. We've asked them to take a look at a broad range of examples from other jurisdictions. We tend to often focus on Ontario, and we often try to explain to them, you know, it'd be great if you could focus on communities of a similar size to ours, and, you know, as much as Toronto may have great examples on how to deal with density, they're looking at very different numbers than we are. But I think it's a good suggestion, and we can certainly ask them to look a little further afield here. And if there's any like communities internationally, then maybe it'd be great to learn from those that have many more years of history than we do in that regard. So thank you for that suggestion.
And through the Warden, with regards to the relationship between a green development standard, potential green development standard, and the building code. Of course, as you rightly note, the building code is the baseline and the authority around what's required. What some other jurisdictions are looking at are various programs to incent and at times require, in consultation with the development community, a higher standard with the anticipation, knowing from the federal and provincial levels of government, that the building code will likely be changing in the coming years. And so sometimes it's possible for lower-tier jurisdictions to kind of lay out a roadmap so that our developers here are ready for those changing codes as they come down.
Well, thank you for those answers, and I really appreciate the input or the thoughts. But I wish you well with the building code changes, because, you know, the industry has been demanding, or most municipalities have been looking for changes in something as simple as adding hurricane clips, and the building code just resists like crazy. And so any other changes to green standards, I look forward to, but there'll be. Anyway, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say good morning and welcome to Counselor Trumpus. We're dealing with item four A on the agenda. We have not yet had the delegation on poverty task from the poverty task force. We'll be getting to that after. Counselor Robinson, you are next.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Warden. Good morning to one and all. You know, I really like the connection between the green development standards and density. And I also really applaud the fact that we have university students studying and researching this very topic. Along with that, I'm wondering, Scott and Linda, are you able to comment in terms of our youth stakeholders? And will there be an opportunity for youth in our community, our Gray County community, to be able to comment on this project? After all, future leaders, future individuals that will be purchasing homes and, you know, growing their family in Gray County. Look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I can take a start at this, and Linda, certainly, if you have any further comments. In this case, the students are on a rather condensed timeframe, and we've designed these projects to be, in this case, remote, just based on not knowing how the public health and COVID changes could happen throughout their semester, so to speak. And so what we've done in this case is to identify a list of stakeholders for each project that we hope they can try to reach out to virtually, whether through a Zoom or Teams meeting or whether through online surveys or phone interviews of that nature. I'll be honest with you, we haven't identified youth stakeholders at this stage for other projects. It's something we could give more thought to. Some of the challenges with that, when we can't meet in person, is, you know, how to connect to the youth network, short of, you know, maybe tapping on our own children, but they're probably already biased anyway. You know, how to get in front of that youth audience, so to speak. So certainly, if there's any suggestions, we're open to them. But I will say that the scope of these projects are fairly tight. With respect to both projects, I think, though, this is just sort of an early point in the conversation. You know, as Linda will note, there's many other steps to come in terms of the implementation of the Climate Change Action Plan, where we'd want youth input, and certainly, future policy changes at the county level with respect to density in terms of official plan amendments or other such documents. I think we could do a more robust consultation in that regard as well.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Boarding Law.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. In regards to, we assume that this will, this report will be a guide. Have we looked at, through this guide or report, definitions of attainable housing and affordable housing? We know there's a distinct criteria and difference between the two. So I'd be hopeful those would be in there, because in the provincial policy statement, they're looking at inclusion of, of course, more affordable and attainable housing. And that's currently not in the LP, the OP from either county or lower-tier municipalities. So I'd be hopeful that we would see that, because we know that the province's housing task force is going to issue the report soon, and that most definitely will be in there. So will the students be taking a look at that from that angle, at least definition and putting measurable targets in there?
Sure, thank you for that question, and through you, Mr. Warden. This report, in terms of the density reports, not specifically an affordable housing report, but we definitely see it affordable housing related. And so in the current county official plan, there are definitions for affordable housing, and we have targets in there. But I think what we want to work with the students on is to explore the benefits of density to support all types of housing, whether it be affordable or attainable or even market rate housing. You know, one of the, I think, suggestions from the provincial report is simply that we need more housing. So I think we'll definitely want to raise both affordable and attainable housing with the students and give them an understanding of what that might mean in the Gray County context, but also in the context of each of the nine member municipalities. But in this particular case, I don't think we're necessarily asking them to add definition to what each of those terms are, knowing that through other county programs, in terms of things like the official plan and things like our own housing department, we will be, you know, fleshing out what each of those terms mean in our context. So I don't know if that answers your question, but certainly happy to expand if it doesn't.
Thank you. Thank you. Just to follow Mr. Warden, yeah, it does. I'm just hopeful as we move forward that they're all going to run in parallel with each other, because you're going to see, of course, because we don't see that in the official plan right now at any length. And we know that true definitions between the two, and it may be not the genesis of this report, but it's also, it would help to be some targets and definitions laid out there to help follow, especially when you're moving into the OP. As we see, you know, it is outlined in the provincial policy statement, so we'd like to. And again, the task force will be coming up with the report soon, and we're sure to see those two definitions be in there. So I'd hopefully that we get ahead of the curve on that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boarding Law. Counselor Desai, you're next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I got disconnected a little bit, so I apologize if some of what I say is a repetition. But I heard Counselor Robinson asked about the youth input, and I heard part of Scott's response to that. I think one of the things we need to recognize is youth is such a broad term. And it's not really defined. I mean, for some members of council, someone who's 35 or 40 could be youth. And for some members of council, someone who's 15 to 17 is youth. So I think, rather than look at that as a catch-all term, we should look, we should treat it as it is, as different demographics, really. Because I know my opinion on some of this, or the opinion of people born in my generation on some of these things would be distinctly different from people who are in high school today. So a couple of suggestions that I'd like to make. Youth groups in our county, for example, there is the Rotary Act Highlanders that deal with young people. There's also the Junior Farmers of Gray County that have a membership exclusively of younger people. There is also organizations in our county that cater exclusively to young people. For example, in Fleshtown, there is the Hanley Institute, which is a lovely organization that works with youth and after-school programs and such. And I'm sure there's other organizations and other municipalities that are similar. And they could, they'd be more than happy to sort of set up a workshop of some kind where, you know, the county could go in and organize a workshop or work with them to get their input in a more informal, more indirect, and perhaps a more interactively. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Thank you, Counselor Desai, and I did hear Scott say that stock are willing to put their heads towards that. Counselor Keating, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and a question for Scott and Linda. And I realize I may be sinking down into the weeds a little bit, but I was curious to know, as part of the project, if you'd be asking the students to look at things like greener building materials, disposal of construction materials, tree preservation, lighting within subdivisions and that kind of thing, or strictly on the actual building processes themselves?
I saw Linda bobbing her head, so maybe Linda's the best person here.
Thank you, through you, Warden Hicks. So we've asked them to look primarily, I think, at what's happening in other jurisdictions. And certainly, there are green building materials is part of that conversation. So it's the operation of the building and the materials to build. And in terms of the consultation that happened through the fall on the overall climate action plan, there was certainly feedback that as we're looking at green development, we should be looking at things like tree planting and potential green infrastructure on development sites. So I would say at a high level, yes, we've not in any way limited the students and have encouraged them to take a kind of broad look at sustainable development.
To vote, Counselor Keating?
Mr. Warden, yes, thank you very much to you and to Linda.
Counselor Silver, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So I think these are great projects, and I want to thank the students and the university for, you know, working with us on this. And so as far as the density one, which is, you know, is it going to compare what's actually, are they going to actually be looking at what the density of projects has been over the last, say, few years in various lower-tier municipalities? And, you know, what the rules are around that? And so, you know, are we going to get some historical context? Because I would be really interested in seeing, you know, what, you know, what we have been doing against our targets as well. I mean, the county does have targets for attainable and affordable. But, you know, it says, the provincial policy statement does say implement as well. So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, have we been achieving those targets? I mean, it's great to have targets, but it's another thing to actually achieve them. And so I'd be very interested in that. I know that's quite a bit of work, but we're certainly happy, while I'm speaking for staff, but I'm sure our staff would be happy to provide them with those statistics for the Blue Mountains. And hopefully, we can, you know, do a county-wide survey of what we've been achieving in terms of density. And, well, the county planning department would have that as well. The other thing is, there's been a lot of, there's 55 recommendations in the new Housing Task Force Report. And so there's quite a bit that would concern density. You know, they're limiting, like, recommendation three is to allow, as of right, residential housing up to four units and up to four stories on a single residential lot. So recognizing that's not yet policy, it's just recommendations from a task force. You know, is the work that's going to be done going to consider some of these recommendations and how they might impact Gray County?
Thank you. Madam CIO, did you want to weigh in on that?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I want to thank council for all of your thoughtful suggestions and considerations with regard to these reports, especially the one dealing with density. I think you're familiar with other student projects that we've been able to have done in the past. The thing about these projects is, while we really benefit from the expertise of the students and their interest and fresh perspective, they are very, they're very focused, and they're very time-limited. Right? This is, this is part of the students' work for their program. And so the county does need to make some accommodations for what we're asking them to do to ensure that it aligns well with the program requirements of their master's program. So what I would suggest is that we'll take back all of your suggestions and other questions as time moves forward and we see where the province lands with turning these recommendations into actual policy. And I think there'll be a lot of follow-on work that happens later this year. Where we can, we'll do our best to address questions that you've raised this morning. But as I say, the scope of work for the projects, by definition, needs to be quite focused. And so that's where we are right now, and we'll make sure that your questions do get answered in due time.
Very much, Madam CIO. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, for recognizing me. And just a thought, as Madam CIO was speaking, just refresh my memory in terms of the timeline for this project. And will it dovetail perhaps with the AMO conference? And is there an ability, just food for thought at this time, that we may be able to speak with Minister Clark in terms of density and the results coming out of the project? Anyway, I just put that on the table for now, but thought it worthwhile. Thank you.
For that. Okay, I think we are ready to call the question, are we? So on the motion before us to receive for information this report, anyone opposed? Seeing no hands, that is indeed carried. I understand that both of our delegates are here now, both Paul and Jill. And Bart will be making introductions. We're now dealing with item number three, delegation from the Poverty Task Force.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, County Council. Thank you for the opportunity for our colleagues from the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force to attend today. This is the culmination of a year's tour to all of your municipalities. We were welcomed to delegate at each and every one of our municipal colleagues as an opportunity to share information learned, to bring forward some wonderful innovations that have taken place during a very difficult time. As we know, there are some silver linings in some of the work that's been going on with the pandemic. And today, we have Paul Wagner, who is the Food Security Coordinator, and Jill Umbach as the Planning Network Coordinator, both working with Poverty Task Force. So I would like to welcome these colleagues of ours at a very strong community partner with the County of Gray.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'll just share the screen with everyone, and we'll get started.
Good morning, we're welcome.
Thank you. Bear with me for a moment. There we go. All right. Hope everyone can see that. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Many of you are familiar with the tool foodbrucegray.com from our presentations over the past six months. Today, what we'd like to do is update you on the food insecurity situation in our region using data from that tool. As always, our immediate goal is to build awareness of food insecurity through informing, educating, and correcting misconceptions while demonstrating the size and scope of the issue in our communities. Our longer-term goal is to continue to connect more people, agencies, and food organizations to engage in creating solutions to the underlying causes while continuing to provide those in need with the solutions or as until those solutions become available. One in five people in Gray Bruce is suffering from some form of food insecurity right now. Seniors, adults, children, food insecurity doesn't discriminate. Food banks and meal programs are doing a good job alleviating food insecurity, much the same way that Band-Aids work. The work being done by those organizations and volunteers is vitally important, because the demand has never been greater. But as agencies, organizations, and governments, it's important for us to recognize that until we take steps to address the root causes of food insecurity, all we're really doing is treading water. With rising housing costs and increasingly greater proportion of household income having, and also having inflation for the first time in a generation, the threat of rising interest rates, all of these issues are combining to make food insecurity, the food insecurity issue worse in our region. Working towards finding solutions are our challenges to be overcome, for sure. A general lack of overall awareness that people have about the size and scope of this problem, the importance and need to cross-connect food organizations, leaders, and volunteers to community agencies so that via collaboration, they're able to make warm referrals for meeting their clients' needs and fostering an increased connectivity between the different community organizations, such as food banks, meal programs, and gardens, and food rescue organizations. And also finding ways to overcome distance and geography and whether to move and share food between the 50-plus organizations over the 8,000 square kilometers in an efficient and timely manner. Whoops, sorry. We'd like to review some of the things that are working to help the situation. The first of this is the Poverty Task Force, and we'll let Jill address this. The first of this is the Poverty Task Force, and we'll let Jill address this, this one.
Good morning, everybody. As you are aware, it's almost close to 10 years that Gray County has supported the Poverty Task Force. And we are really grateful for that continued support and the leadership that has been taken by this council on working on anti-poverty reduction issues. The Poverty Task Force currently still works with over 52 community-based organizations. In this past year, we've been heavily involved with connecting with the Community Safety Wellbeing Plan, with Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy, with the Healthy Communities Partnership Table as well to look at the impact of what's going on in our communities. The work that Paul is doing is supported by our community of practice of food, community food programs. So our work, a lot of what we're doing is providing the backbone support and the ongoing connectivity between research, data collection, and action on the ground. And Paul's going to speak more to that.
One of the things that's also working are the food security meetings. They're a way to facilitate grassroots conversations between the volunteer organizations, governmental agencies, and community partners to discuss shared issues, challenges, and solutions. Designed to enhance connectivity and collaboration, these one-hour bi-weekly meetings tackle diverse topics from everything from period poverty to how, how to address legal advice for clients of the food banks and the meal programs. The website foodthoughts.ca was designed to fill a gap of accessible training and information for the community food organizations. Many volunteers are pressed for time and unable to attend in person or go to even online meetings. So they wanted a resource tool that they could view when they had time. With more than 250 articles and videos on food bank, meal program, and community garden issues, this tool is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and is growing every week. We've appreciated the support that all of your councils have provided to foodbrucegray.com. And it's as it provides accessible and up-to-date information for the, for food insecurity in Gray Bruce. With more than 85% participation from the community food organizations, for the first time, community leaders, the media, and the public have a tool that enables conversations from, from being based only on anecdotal information to having evidence-based conversations. We'd like to share some of that data comparing 2021 to 2020. Community meal programs provided more than 180,000 meals in 2021, which was a 31% increase. And that's, that's continuing the 300% increase from pre-COVID levels. Food rescue programs diverted 74,000 kilograms worth of food, an 82% increase over the previous year. To put that in terms of, you know, grocery bags, an average grocery bag weighs 35 pounds. That would, the food rescue program would have diverted 46,000, sorry, 4,600 bags of groceries. The food bank programs distributed 171,000 kilograms worth of food, a 27% increase over the previous year, where the equivalent of more than 10,700 bags of groceries. The food bank programs served 21,442 clients, a 10% increase over the previous year. Not only do many of the 22 food banks in Gray Bruce provide food support, but they also provide food insecure and vulnerable people income support solutions through tax clinics and warm referrals to other programs. The community gardens grew 18,000 kilograms worth of fresh produce last year. And they're scattered throughout Gray Bruce. Many, many gardens were not able to operate in 2020. With protocols in place in 2021, these gardens were able to make a significant contribution to food banks and meal programs, providing fresh fruits and vegetables. Last year, volunteers donated more than 36,000 hours, which was a 60% increase over the previous year. Using data from volunteer.ca, that would represent more than $1 million worth of payroll. Not only does FoodBruceGray.com draw attention to food insecurity, it also exists to help inform everyone about the tremendous commitment that the volunteers have made to helping address this issue. In the coming months of 2022, we hope to expand food rescue programs to more grocery stores, restaurants, and businesses, as well as more communities in Gray and Bruce. We want to reach out to more gardens to become part of the Gray Bruce Community Garden Network. And we want to help develop even more gardens on top of that. We want to continue to enhance awareness and interconnectivity between all of the different food organizations. As issues and solutions are discussed, we're constantly remember, reminded to ensure that we appreciate the biases and stigmas that we all have. We need to engage more decision makers and people in conversation to help address the need to increase the supply of safe and affordable housing. And then not to forget that the people experiencing food insecurity deserve our respect and their dignity. How can you help but continue to do what you've been doing? Helping to facilitate more evidence-based solutions, like more safe and affordable housing. You've already provided tremendous leadership, and by encouraging even more mixed property development, this has really helped to move the conversation beyond simply donating food to actually influencing one of the root causes of poverty by supporting and recognizing income solutions from organizations that pay a living wage, and more community members are benefiting from the reduction in poverty. And finally, to explore how a basic minimum wage can work to encourage more open conversations and help some, overcome some of the historical misconceptions that that topic has. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. And on behalf of Jill and Barb, and to, we appreciate your support in helping to illuminate this large but mostly hidden issue. We've covered a lot of information very quickly, and if you have any questions, we would be more than happy to answer them for you.
Well, thank you very much, Paul, and thank you very much, Jill. I know the pans are going up already, so we'll get straight to the Councilor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question for the, the, the two guests today is, what is a current living wage in Gray Bruce?
Would you like to address that, Jill?
I can do that, yes. So traditionally, annually, the United Way calculates the living wage. The last living wage we had done was in 2019, using 2018 data, which was 1,839. Since then, we have not issued a new one because there is a little bit of a debate as to what should be included and not included in that calculation based on the, the current pandemic conditions. We're estimating around $22 an hour right now with the increase in the cost of living and the increase of cost of fuel. We haven't released it for this year because things are shifting. But Brian, Councilor Brian, I would say it's around $22 an hour.
Suffice to say, 15 is not enough.
Yeah, and what, one of the factors you will see from Living Wage Ontario releases what other communities are doing. So other cities and municipalities have actually seen with the introduction of the SERB last year, our reduction in the living wage. And we felt that, that here in Gray Bruce, that was a bit of a misleader on the actual requirement. So while the government supplemented people last year, they're not seeing necessarily the large supplements this year. So we didn't want to release something that went below the 1,839, which we felt was still not going to give a true picture of the cost of living as we know, which is going up.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Robinson, you're next.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to take my electronic hand down. You know what? I very, very much appreciate this conversation. And thank you, Jill and, and Paul for being here, inspiring. There is a call to action, so I really, really appreciate that. And two questions, if I might. If you could just further explain how we can explore a guaranteed basic income and how that can work? And I appreciate Councilor Mellon addressing the living wage issue. And also, on a second point, how can a local community garden become connected with Gray Bruce's community network? Thank you and appreciate the presentation.
Right. Jill, I'll maybe let you address the first one, and I'll address the second one.
That sounds good. So the basic income or the guaranteed livable income, right now, we do have a private members' bill, which is before Parliament and the Senate. And it's put forth to look at what would the framework of that be? So basically, come up with the nuts and bolts of how would that work if the, if the federal government decided on switching to a guaranteed income for all citizens? So right now, they do have the setup for seniors. Seniors have a guaranteed income supplement. So the government would be, if the bill was passed, it's just going into second reading. If that private members' bill was passed, they would then have a working group that would develop the framework for a national. So it would, in, in our, my perspective and my experience, the recommendations that came out of the pilot in Ontario for a basic income, it would work similar to that or maybe not. I mean, it might, Barb's going, well, there's a lot of discussion on what's the easiest way. We know that the GIS to seniors through the tax system is a very direct way to get additional supports into the income. It's based on your filing your taxes every year, and it reduces the paperwork and the bureaucracy of applying year after year. So there's a lot of models out there, but I think the one being advocated for right now by various political people at the national level is to discuss what the best one is, come up with a framework, and to see how it works through the, the tax system. Arb, I don't know if you've got anything in your experience that might add to that?
Thanks, Jill. So we've certainly seen how people's lives have stabilized with that $2,000 a month from the federal benefits. And as that changed at the end of October into November and December, we're seeing our, our caseload climb. There's been some extension of benefits, but we know, considering the rates of, for social assistance, $800 for a single person versus the $2,000 that was determined at a federal level, there's a huge disparity. And it, the reason for all the programs that we're talking about are to make up the difference, to help people to meet their basic needs. And so when we think about the infrastructure that goes into creating all of those other programs and supplementing housing and food and medical care and transportation, how much are we really spending when it could be a universal basic income that could meet the needs of folks? And it goes back to your social determinants of health, it really does. It drives back to meeting the needs of housing first, then stabilizing for other needs that people may have in our vulnerable population. So it's complex. We call it a wicked problem because it, one thing leads to another, but chipping away at it is the way to go.
Yeah, one of the things that we find in our conversations with the food organizations is most people are spending 80, 90, or 100% of their income just to have someplace to live. And it's affecting increasingly what used to be deemed the middle class. So it's not just the people that you would traditionally think would be using a meal program or a food bank. To address your second concern, the easiest way for a garden to connect is to send me an email or to call me at the United Way. Again, what we're trying to do is build a collaborative network where we share ideas, resources, and also the food that's generated so that it can go to meal programs or food banks that could really use the, the support.
Thank you very much. And Paul, your email address is very slowly?
Okay, it's food@unitedwaybg.com. Yes.
Mr. Warden, can I suggest too that I can be a conduit as well? If folks want to reach out, they can just certainly connect through me and, and I can loop back in with Paul and Jill.
For sure. Okay, next is Councilor Keveney.
Mr. Warden, thank you. And my first question has basically been answered by Barb. I was wondering about predictions post-pandemic, but we sense that we're going to have an even greater need. So my second question was, and it was mentioned in the presentation, that there's a need to grow awareness of this problem. And I'm wondering how we go about that, thinking of home gardeners? And, you know, everybody plants too many cucumbers and tomatoes and potatoes and all the rest of it, and how we reach those folks to encourage them to donate their extra projects to food banks to, to support the programs?
If, if I could address that, I'll maybe back up one step. When you look at the data that's been generated by foodbrucegray.com, a lot of people anticipated that the demand would start to decline as COVID started to end. And that hasn't been the case. The demand for food banks and for the meal programs has actually been increasing virtually every month. And it's really being driven by the housing situation now, much more than, you know, than COVID. So again, that's one of the nice things about this particular tool. You can actually see where the demand is. To address your second point, awareness, you know, that's huge. You know, we've appreciated the opportunity to speak to all of you. Last year, we did 35 presentations to various municipal councils, high schools, colleges, universities, service clubs, and we're doing everything we can to get that message out to people. And, you know, we're certainly open to more ideas, but we're using social media, you know, word of mouth, and, you know, conversations like the one we're having today to, to reach out to as many people as we can, just to really build an awareness of it. When people drive through our towns, they can't believe that there's a food insecurity issue here. You know, it's not something that's even on their radar. But using the stats that we had at the beginning, one in five people in Gray Bruce is experiencing some form of food insecurity. So we need all the help we can get, and we're open to everybody's ideas.
Thank you. Are we good to call Councilor Keveney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Next is Councilor DeSai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I have three questions here. The first is, do we have, if, if we have a list somewhere of, a list of corporations that do pay a living wage? I know I've walked into a certain service industry or service providers that, that do have notices out that they, that advertise that they do pay a living wage. Do we have a list centrally of corporations that do this? Or the second is, do we have organizations in Gray Bruce that are actively lobbying senior levels of government for the provision of a universal basic income? One of the reasons that people take a lower-paying job is because something is better than nothing. And if their basic needs were looked after, they would be able to consider saying, you know, I think my time is worth more than $14, $15 an hour. And the last question I have is, if we know whether, we, we know there is, there is a shortage of labor in our, in our area, in our region. Do we know, though, if this current shortage of labor in our region has led to corporations having to provide increased remuneration to, to attract people? And if that has maybe moved us a little closer from the 15 to the 22? Those are my three questions. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Yeah, it's a lot packed in there. Who wants to?
Yeah, so I'm going to tackle those questions. So first of all, we do not have currently a list of corporations that do pay a living wage. What we do have is, we have collaboration between all of the employment agencies and four county labor planning market board. And they do research on who is paying what, where, where the jobs are, where the demands are. So as you probably have received recently from Gemma Mendez Smith, that type of analysis around precarious living examines, you know, what is part of the living wage? Because there's the living wage plus benefits, there's other precarious aspects of staying employed and being able to feed your family. So we know it's, living wage is only one component of reducing precarious work. But pre-pandemic, we had planned as part of our income and security, employment security action group to track that and to promote those that were, were, were providing a living wage and great conditions and benefits. And to engage with employers to say a little bit more would go a long way to retaining your employees. And that was something we did in partnership with four county labor planning market board. In 2019, we did a employer one survey, and then we did an employee's one survey. And they had never done that before to say, well, why are people staying on the job? And some of those aspects you talked about, what keeps people employed? And sometimes it's the wage, but sometimes there's other, other benefits offered. Shuttle service to work, other things that address the lack of transportation or subsidies for childcare, big issue. Can you find childcare for women to get back into the workforce? So our Income and Employment Action Group recently met, and they were discussing, you know, what is going to take to get people back in and how do we match people to the job? So we know that there's a shortage in skilled labor. We also know there's a shortage in childcare. We also know there's a pandemic and risk for frontline people. So frontline worker can be retail, could be somebody working in childcare centers, trying to provide that, those services. The employment partners that we have have spoken to how they negotiate with, with. Um, the employment, um, partners that we have have spoken to how they negotiate with, with employers. And they will say, you know what? You're just offering too low or the package isn't good enough and therefore so and so other corporation is going to get the employees. So there is a discussion around that happening. Um, I think there is a recognition by the Ontario government that some employers aren't able to meet that living wage standard. Um, and therefore we have precarious employers or precarious, um, businesses in place that need to be looked at. If I think of some of the small businesses, uh, retail businesses, not the large ones, but the smaller ones, we're not going to.
Looks like we have a frozen screen. Paul, are you able to pick up or perhaps Barb?
Uh, Barbara, did you want to, to continue that?
Sure. I think, um, Jill's message was fairly clear that, uh, it's, it's a big issue, but we do have lobbying as well. We, we know that there have, um, passed through here at council last year, I think it was last year in, in July. Um, there was a motion from, um, Kitchener, um, the city of Kitchener to support a universal basic income and council endorsed that and sent a letter, um, stating that Gray County supported that motion. Um, and then finally, I think the last question was about, um, have, have we seen businesses that have actually, uh, addressed this by saying, I guess I'll have to pay more. I know it's coming out of my profits and it's going to be really difficult, but that's the only way to actually attract. We've seen that absolutely, Counselor Desai. Um, we, they're competing with one another and it's really unfortunate because it takes all of us to build that, that structure um, of, of our local business community. Um, but we see signage, I've seen signage where people are saying we, we pay this amount, which is pretty hard for someone who's driving to work past that sign every day to think, well, I could be making that wage. We know in our sector, we've lost, uh, childcare workers to factory work because they were paying more at the factory and yet they're educated and passionate about their, about what they chose for a career. It's just, it's bottom line, it's what it takes to survive. So it's that wage. So I hope we answered your questions.
That counts on the sign.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Barb. And, uh, when Jill gets back, thank you to her as well, uh, for the detailed answer. Um, I, I am struggling a little bit because this is not the first time we've, uh, we've heard of this issue. This is not the first time we've, uh, we're hearing of this and there's got to be something that as a level of government that we can do uh, to work on this. And I'm not saying that, that we should stop receiving these uh, delegations because I think it's important that we receive these delegations because these are issues that uh, someone we might see at, uh, in, in our community is perhaps dealing with. But there has to be something that as, as a level of government that we're able to do, uh, whether it's through lobbying or and I, I just feel at a loss of words. I feel a bit helpless because it seems that there's all these, um, problems and that, that there doesn't seem to be solutions. Uh, yeah, and, and, yeah. So that, that was the reason for, especially for the second question with regards to, uh, if there are any organizations that are actively lobbying that we could perhaps support in some way, uh, in their, in their lobbying efforts and, and so on. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, I, 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 I really, I respect the work and appreciate the work that Barb, Paul and Jill do. Um, because it certainly can't be easy, uh, to, um, to deal with these issues on, on a daily basis. Um, so, uh, yeah. Yeah. If there's anything that, you know, council can, can do, um, I, yeah. Yeah. Sorry for the rambling.
No, it's, it's, if I can interject, you know, the work that you've been doing on housing. You know, when you look at the root causes of so many of the problems, people can't afford to live here. And if we can increase the supply of housing, I have a degree in economics, supply and demand. And right now the demand is through the roof, but if we can balance that equation, I think we'll see a lot of the other issues starting to come into play um, and, and find solutions. But the very best thing are, are lots of conversations about what everybody might be able to bring to the table.
Right. And Councilor Desai, I, I think that slide 12, uh, delegation, um, is a nice little summary, three things that I see there facilitating more affordable housing, supporting and encouraging more organizations to pay a living wage. And lastly, exploring how a guaranteed basic income can work. Um, I think those are the three, three very tangible things that we could turn our heads to, and I suspect that we'll be doing just that. Uh, I see Barb smiling. Uh, Counselor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just a comment, uh, I can appreciate Counselor Desai's frustration. But the reality, as far as I can see, the reality is we know what the solutions are, by and large. As a community, as a society, are we prepared to suck it up and put those solutions in place? We had an opportunity to do a full study and a fulsome opportunity to see the impacts of a guaranteed income. And the current government decided to throw it out the window. And I'm not trying to be political here one way or the other, but I'm just saying, as a community, we know what the solutions are. Are we going to grow a set and do the job and, and solve the problem?
Well, some passion certainly helps, Counselor Mellon. We know that you are never political. All right. I think we've come to the end of our discussion. I see people smiling. Maybe that's a good place, uh, for us to end. I want to thank you, Paul, and thank you, uh, Jill. Very good, uh, presentation and very good, uh, discussion. Barb, thank you as well. Uh, I think, you know, bottom line, folks are out there advocating for people to live with dignity and that's, that's the bottom line. And people are entitled to that. Sure. Um, I want to say that I really appreciate the information that comes, um, from the poverty task force during the pandemic, um, particularly, uh, the data and the sort of, you know, correlating of information and, uh, where to go for what. Um, that was so useful to see in one place and for us to be able to share. Um, thank you for doing that and continuing, uh, to do that. I can't help but think that people who may have been struggling, uh, treading water and trying to keep their nose just barely above the water, that for, uh, some of them, that was, uh, a lifeline indeed. So again, thank you for everything that you do and thank you for being here today and making that, uh, presentation. Counselor, it is now, um, just about 10 minutes, uh, past. Uh, I'm going to suggest that we take a 15 minute, uh, break, which will bring us back, uh, here at 11:25 sharp. We'll see you then. Please turn off your, uh, video and mute, please. Barb, are we good to go?
Yes, we're ready to go, Mr. Warden.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We are now on to item four B, which is the response time performance plan results for 2021. That puts Kevin on deck. This item's been moved by Counselor Boardignon and seconded by Counselor Robinson. Kevin, you have the floor.
Morning, counsel and Warden. Uh, can everybody see my presentation? Okay. Okay, uh, today I'm here to talk to you about the, uh, 2021 response time of results. Um, so two recommendations, uh, the first is that to receive the report and also to, uh, to send the correspondence to the ministry by March 31st of this year. At the county, we're continually looking, looking to improve our service at all times. And one is also where we spend a lot of time is around response times. And you can see that where we meet the, where we set the targets for, especially where we can determine the times C task two, three, four and five. We keep to a 90th percentile, which is a nine times out of 10, which at times can be difficult to meet, but we keep it there because it, it does give a true reflection. Nine times out of 10, how often we are able to get to a, a destination in a certain amount of time. We also look at numerous things. We adjust, uh, deployment of vehicles based upon peak call, uh, call timeframes. We've introduced technology, uh, a cad link program that gives real time locations of calls and call information as, as it comes up through our dispatch center. Over the years, we've, uh, put in additional staffing and, uh, we've, you know, that involved up staffing and Dundalk nights and Craig Lea nights, extra additional coverage in Craig Lea during the ski season months. And then, uh, we continue to work with new models of care around programs like first response and community paramedics, where we've tried to decrease the need on the 911 system wherever possible. So it's an ever-evolving and constantly, uh, monitored and, uh, adjusted uh, work that we do to, to maintain and, and keep these and improve upon these response times. So this report will give you the 2020 response, response times that we were able to attain. So each year, uh, in the summer, I generally bring the report forward in August. Uh, and we have to determine the next year's plan for the response time of the upcoming calendar year. And then at this time every year, we report on the previous year's performance. And this, this information is fed to the ministry and they do upload it to the, uh, Government of Ontario website where you can see all services across Ontario. There are six targets that we look at. The first one is, uh, the time it takes to get a defibrillator to the scene of a sudden cardiac arrest. And that's not just paramedics, but it could be a public access C P I B site, it could be the fire department. Uh, but that time is measured in how often and what percentage can we get there or get a defibrillator to that patient's side within six minutes? The second target is around C task ones are, are most, our sickest patient. And the time that there is set by the ministry of eight minutes and the percentage is set by us is how often we get to those C task one patients within eight minutes. And then the C task two, three and four and five categories. The municipality sets those times and the percentile, uh, for each of those, uh, for the response times for the upcoming year. So just a bit of information about C task and what it means. It's, it's really a triage or acuity scale. It really talks about the severity of illness of the patient, how sick they are. So the, the lower the number, C task one is our sickest of all patients and we would call that a pre-suscitation. We'd see these in major traumas, people in active seizure, cardiac arrest. Um, um, people that are severely hypotensive or people we have to ventilate. Our C task two is emergency care. So this could be somebody that's having a heart attack, a stroke, a head injury. A C task three, which is urgent care, uh, they could have like a moderate breathing problem, anxiety, agitation. Maybe just done well for the last few days, but relatively stable. C task four is a less urgent care and this could be somebody with like the stitches or a sprained ankle. And then, uh, the, the last one being a non-urgent could be like a, like a dressing change, sore throat, you know, transfer and those type of things. So it, what it does is prioritize these patients. The paramedics assess them, the patient's C task on their arrival. And that's what the response time is determined on is the, is the C task that's determined at that time. But we also assess what condition the patient is in when we transport and then also arrival on hospice. We can measure the difference that it's been made or, or not made throughout the course of the call. So this, uh, chart here will give you the results of our response time for 2021. And it also talks about our targets. So the first one with sudden cardiac arrest, the ministry determines that you have to measure how often you get there within six minutes. And the, and the municipality, we, based upon historical, uh, values, but when we developed this back in 2012, it was set at 40%. And, uh, for 2021, it was 50.57% and the average was, uh, 45.69. For our C task one, and this is the ambulance paramedic response. The ministry sets the, the mark of eight minutes and we set the percentile at 60%. And, uh, for 2021, it was 60.82 and our five-year average is 64.9. The C task two, uh, response is, and then this is where we set the, uh, time of 15 minutes and 90%. Uh, we set both of those, our 2021, uh, result was 88.77 and our five-year average has been 89.21. Uh, th- this is one area, this C task two is where we have had trouble in the past. We, this target, we've been in, in this range of just a percent to a percent off. Uh, last year, 2020, we met all targets, but the previous years we hadn't met in some of those areas, but that scenario we continue to work on. C task three, uh, in 20 minutes, 90% of the time, uh, 2021 was 97.5 and, uh, the five years, 97%. C task four in 20 minutes, 90% of the time, 95 and 96 for the average. And then, uh, C task five is for 20 minutes is 94.4 and 95.6. So fairly consistent over the past five years with some improvements and there's sometimes they fluctuate up and down, but, uh, that, that's where the kind of response times have been over the last five years. So for the 2021 year, uh, we met all targets other than the C task two, like you seen there, we're just shy of that. One thing I like to do also is, uh, these response times were developed back in 2012. And, uh, we've been measuring response times, uh, really since 1996. And we have a, uh, another way of measuring response times is, uh, is what we, we bundle up all the code fours and we take the 90th percentile. And that's where we really get the 90th percentile. We'd like to be able to maintain that because we really are able to tell people nine times out of 10, this is when, how long it takes us to get to a call on a code for emergency basis. So for, for 2021, when you bundle all the calls up into one, uh, it's for their 15 minutes and 29 seconds. And that, and that at times, we had a lot less code fours, uh, when the county just assumed the service way back in 2004. It was as high as 17 minutes. So even with significant increases in response to, or calls, you've been able to reduce the response times. And our average response, and that's why I'd like to put this up there because and nine times out of 10, if there's 10,000 code fours, they only take one time. That's the, the time of the call and the 9,000th call. So you know, nine times out of 10, that's how long you'll be there. Where an average, you know, sometimes when people report that it sounds a lot better, but that's really taking you a one minute, two minute response times. It could be a 30 minute response. I hope that doesn't happen very often. But, uh, that average is all, but it really doesn't give you really a lot to, uh, as a target. So I, I like the nine, nine times out of 10 90th percentile. And I, I guess just one thing to qualify here, this is not only just, uh, the response time of drive time. This is from the time that the pager goes off inside the base and they get in the vehicle, pull outside and get the details and get going. So, uh, we, we, we call that the shoot time. So it's the time notified to the time we arrive at the scene. So, uh, when you say that for the, the area of, of Gray County, as vast as it is, uh, nine times out of 10, the time the pager goes off, the time we're at your location, it's 15 minutes and 29 seconds. In 2021, we, uh, seen our, our, our greatest call volume yet. Our patient volumes were, uh, just over 13,300, which when you look at, uh, 2020, uh, we did have a bit of a drop in the call volume. I believe probably some of the, the, the lockdowns from the pandemic probably impacted this over 17% over where we were in 2020. But when you look back to 2019, uh, which was our busiest year to date yet, we were roughly 12% above that. And, uh, when you look back over the last five years and even more when you stretch six, but in the last five years, it's been a 22% uh, increase. So, uh, year over year, uh, significant increases in response, the call volumes. And, uh, we're, we're seeing this across the provinces, not just something gray. A lot of paramedic services are seeing, uh, increasing call volumes. Uh, this year, uh, this past year, 2021, when we did the planning, uh, for, for this upcoming year, we discussed about doing a comprehensive deployment review. And this is where we'll use an external agency to come in and, uh, look at our current and, and present and predicted call volumes over the next 10 years, looking at patient demographics, growth, population growth, you know, aging population. Um, and, and then from there and, and look at different models of care and, and then come up with a plan. You know, what, what that means as far as, you know, enhancing the service, you know, to maintain or improve response times in different areas of the county and, and, and as the county as a whole. So, uh, I look forward to that report and, uh, uh, it will be using, uh, again, like an external agency to look at this and give us guidance. And, uh, I really look forward to have that direction. I, I think a lot of the stuff that we've done so far has made sense. You know, we knew what we needed to do as far as moving, moving, uh, moving, shifting patterns and adding bases, but now, you know, based upon areas of the county that we still need to look at, and then the increase in call volume. I look forward to this, uh, guidance coming from, uh, these external agencies, similar to what other, other paramedic services have done in the province. And, uh, just take any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, Kevin. If you could just return to the whole screen. It helps for me. Let's see, we have one hand up already. Before we take the questions, I have to tell you in the town of Hanover, there are two sort of services that I received probably the most compliments about, one would be the police. Our favorite that I get the most compliments about is the library. And for Gray County, I have to tell you that the number one service that I receive compliments about, not to suggest at all that other departments aren't doing very, very well. It's with respect to our paramedics. So congratulations to you for that. I will turn to councillor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. I always this is a very good report. I always look forward to it. My question is, as the county becomes more and more urbanized, is that going to play into where these numbers go, i.e. you know, it takes shorter time to get into a greater proportion of the population in an urban center as opposed to rural? And I guess further to that, at what point, where's the tipping point? Whether we put more resources into getting more to get to more of our rural population in a in a an appropriate time?
Yeah, I like I I think that we we constantly face, I always call it like an area versus volume problem. And like we have built up areas and that's where you see if our base locations are, is that where those most urban areas are. But but you you still have to look out for, you know, the the rural areas and where we have the area problems. And 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 have a reasonable response time. I think if people know it takes you fifteen minutes to drive and get a bag of milk. You know, we can't be on every corner, it probably takes fifteen minutes to get an ambulance there. And again, we do our best that we can to align that. I look forward to that consultant report because I think that's where they'll look at and say, you know, this is an area that, you know, the call volume is not high, but if you put the vehicle here, it not just helps this area. But it could it'll help the overall system because it'll keep vehicles in those built up areas. So it is a bit of a, it it will be a a bit of a a work to do. Like I I think about Gray County, we have eight base locations and forty five hundred square kilometers. And we have, you know, on a on a daily basis, we have nine ambulances. In Toronto, they have six hundred and twenty five square kilometers and have a hundred and ten ambulances. You know, their problem, obviously, when I was there, it still is, is volume. You know, like what what that whole area that they cover with six hundred and twenty five square kilometers. That's like one base area where they have a hundred ambulances in that dense area where we have one vehicle. So it it is, it is a balancing act in rural Ontario, you know, you 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 want to you want to, you know, yeah, there's there's obviously a limit to resources, you try to maximize and invest.
Great. No, thank you very much for that. And and there was no criticism intended in that question whatsoever. You guys do a tremendous job. You and your team, I get a lot of compliments as well and you're you're well appreciated right across the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, it's it's really the paramedics and staff, the service that really did do that, and I really got to give them the credit.
Sounds like a great leader indeed. Councillor Boardignon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Thanks, Kevin, for the report. As you move, I I look forward to the the future planning as well as you go forward. It's tough because we you not only have the growth, you know, as we saw at Blue Mountains is the, you know, a part of part of Gray County is the second largest growing town in in Canada right now, but we also have the influx of more people with COVID. So you have to sort of factor that in as well. We we see it. You know, in our town, we saw from a fifty fifty population to probably a seventy five twenty five. So I I anticipate that puts more pressure on you as as a as a first responder core service. So when you, I guess, when you look at this this new plan on a go forward basis, unfortunate of the factor in not unfortunately, I guess, but people that are making maybe more seasonal dwellings. Even though, you know, throughout the Gray County as becoming full time residents. So I I guess that will have to be part of the the process as you move forward, that's that's been a factor that hasn't really been in play before, because we just look at the population, we look at the number of houses, but here we see, you know, as with with Gray County garbage collection, with any of our services, we see the increase has probably gone up in ours, you know, like I said, from a fifty fifty to a seventy five twenty five. And I anticipate that other towns throughout the municipality and the region and the county will do the same. So I guess that would be part of the process as you move forward with the consultant's report.
Yeah, like I I I think that one one thing we'll look at is like probably high volume users and we know you know, obviously, as you get older, you know, those those resources are going to be strained more, so hopefully there'll be a look at some of that demographic material. But like COVID in the community, we have faced that, but like it's not as if like everybody with COVID is calling calling an ambulance. We've had a number of people, but it hasn't really spiked in that area, it may have something to do with it, but I just think we're seeing overall increases across the board.
Thank you. Just to follow Mr. Mr. Chair, no, I I get that. I'm not saying because of COVID, I'm saying, but just more people are here for a longer period of time. You know, their seasonal dwellings may have become full time dwellings and that puts more pressure on you as a service, most definitely. And I just, I just, as we're looking at each report at a town level, we're looking at seeing how many more people are here than normally are here. If somebody's normally here, you know, three hundred and sixty five days and the part or seasonals are here, you know, a hundred and eighty days, that's becoming more blended to seventy five days. So I I I'm sure that puts more pressure on and the the there's not COVID itself, but the pandemic by forcing more people into the community will put more strain on on you as a service.
Yeah, my apologies. Yeah, I see exactly what you're saying. And yes, you know, with with more people living here longer, that will increase the call volumes. We will be able to do with this report, we'll be able to break down municipalities and see increases in each individual municipality and seeing where those spikes are. So I really look forward to having that information.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I also just wanted to extend my sincere thanks to the paramedic services. The response times, Kevin, is just one indicator of the great job that your service does. The paramedicine program, you know, it's really reaping benefits within our our communities. And also yesterday, I was the drug and alcohol strategy Matt yesterday, and I heard about the the SOS program, the supportive outreach that your service is involved with. And I was just wondering if you could maybe just highlight for county council your involvement there, because I heard, you know, you've reached over eighty people that likely otherwise wouldn't have received the support. So if you could just maybe tell us about that program, please.
Yeah, this is like there's been a lot of challenging things through the pandemic and but really what it's it's done for us is, you know, to bring a like a collaborative approach of lots of disciplines coming together to to help people in the community that have been, you know, marginalized by the pandemic and and obviously they even before that as well and we've done the work that, you know, through through a recent outbreak in in Hanover, we got together to support people in the community. And really what we're doing is to meet people where they're at. So between healthcare providers and 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 non-government organizations and county staff around housing and social supports and what we're doing is each week, we either are in Hanover or on sound in a market format, reaching out to people and, you know, providing care where they're at. And then most recently, in January, we've been, we were approved for some short term funding to deliver care within the community on an individual and a follow up basis. So what we have is partnerships with Graver Health Services, CMHA, the County of Gray and United Way, working through our O H T to be able to be out there and seeing people and yeah, when you start this, you don't really know for sure, like what, you know, the need, well, we know what the need is, but really, are we going to be able to to reach the people and we I look forward to this report. I see stats come in on a regular basis and we are reaching people, a number of them, and then delivering care right where they're at. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to the outcomes of this program.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. You know, it's amazing that the work that you're doing that is outside of some of the traditional responses that we see from an ambulance service. So appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor Mackey. Madam C A O, I apologize councillor Robinson, but I see the C A O, did you want to comment on something that came up?
If I may, yes, I just wanted to let council know our plan was to bring a more fulsome report about the outreach program to the new mental health and addictions task force. So there will be an opportunity to discuss the current status of that program as well as, you know, what we can see as far as a future for it. So we will have more conversations and more information about that. So thanks.
Thank you, Madam C A O. Councillor Robinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, Kevin, I just want to take this opportunity to just congratulate you and commend you and and Gray County Paramedic Service for absolutely everything you do, especially during the global pandemic. Certainly, all the outreach to our Gray County residents is very, very much appreciated. So thank you for all your hard work. My question is in terms of response time, I wonder if you could just explain the definition of response time and how it factors into, once you're at the call and if it takes on more of response or the call may take a a different turn in 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 terms of needing further assistance, how do you collect that data to identify not only the time it takes to get to either rural or an urban residence, but also the care that the individual takes once you get there in terms of timeframe? Thank you.
Well, yeah, like as far as like, so when we arrive, we measure the C task, like so where they're at. So like, for instance, if we were to go to an opioid overdose, we we would arrive and there's there's a good possibility they would be, we would call respiratory arrest and we'd have to ventilate the patient, they'd be a C task one. With the treatment that we give them, by the time we were able to transport that person may be a C task three, you know, probably not much higher than that, but most likely two or three because the the medications that we gave them, you know, have reversed the opioid overdose and we're able to transport them to the hospital. So our our goal is when we arrive is to to treat the patient, you know, that like to the best of our abilities based upon the protocols and the directives that we have. And we we constantly look at that treatment that's provided by ourselves and also our base hospital system, every call is audited. You know, as far as anytime there's what we call an advanced life support directive. So a medication given or some type of defibrillation, so they're all audited. We also, as far as time on calls and stuff like that, like for instance, a stroke, you know, we don't take you to the local hospital, we take you to on sound regardless of the timeframe. So at one time, it used to be only within like four and a half hour window, but but now it's in any timeframe to where you receive that stroke care right away, Graver Self Services. So yeah, there's just a different myriad of you know, treatments and care and transport. We have a dashboard that we monitor daily, like at all times, it's real time. And we're able to see, you know, the last twenty four hours of call volumes and where we've had peaks. And and where we've had, you know, obviously areas where we'd less availability of units. So that's something we use that dashboard on a daily basis. You can see every hospital how many patients they've got in the last four hours, how many upload the laser bin. So using that technology really helps us. I don't know that, does that answer your question there?
Yes, thank you very, very much for for the detailed response. Appreciate it.
Listen, Kevin, I wonder if you might also explain, I know when I had the opportunity to have a tour with you, you explained and showed me actually in a visual how when there's a response, what the other team members are doing. So as one person is responding, what are the others doing, you know, how they they sort of covered the gap now that's created by that response? Would you talk a bit about that?
Yeah, we we call those standbys and like like for me, when I think about my ops on the road job, like we're really what I was always concerned with was what we still have available. Not not that I don't care about what the call is happening, but I need to ensure that for the next call that hasn't happened yet and is going to happen in the future to make sure that we mitigate any type of extended response time. So what we do is, for example, between Mifred and Craig Lee, if Mifred was out on a call and Craig Lee would come over and cover Thornberry. But if we have an additional unit, like we have an an extra first response unit in Markdale and an extra unit in Nolan Sound, is that we would actually send that unit over and then we would fill that actual urban area. So every day and 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 it's a little bit easier when there's only one call, but there's lots of times where we have five calls at once, and then you have to kind of split the difference across the whole county of Gray. So we we work with our dispatch center through what we call an emergency coverage statement. And we have standby locations and it's it's the constant discussion between dispatch and our supervisor about, we call it maintaining balanced emergency coverage.
Very good. Thank you for that. Councillor Woodbury, I saw your head bobbing a lot, I guess, given your background as a firefighter. This all makes a lot of sense to you, doesn't it?
It sure does. And and there's so many factors. And Kevin and you and your team are just doing a fantastic job of this. But as as different populations move in, there's different problems, if different, as people age, there's different problems. And and construction, everything can can get into it. And these moves up, move ups, as we used to call them in the fire service, are so important because the response times can just be terrible once incidents start happening. And and I can't stress, like, we've got a service here that you lead, Kevin, that seconded us. So, yeah, great job.
Thank you for that. Okay, I see no other hands. Good discussion, good report. Thank you very much. It's time to call the question on the motion to receive the report and to send the performance results to the Ministry of Health. Is there anyone opposed to that? I'm seeing no hands. That is carried. Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, we're on now, moving on to the land of West Gray, talking about Gray Road twenty seven reconstruction project. I think that that puts Pat on deck. This item has been moved by councillor De Sae and seconded by councillor Carlton. Pat, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, this is a report to to get permission to tender Gray Road twenty seven, which is Durham Road West in Durham in twenty twenty two. So a consultant has been working for West Gray and they've been trying to expedite the design to get it completed and it's very close to completion. We've been given preliminary drawings already. So basically, West Gray needs to do these upgrades to Gray Road twenty seven to service future development north of twenty seven. So it consists of urbanizing the entire four hundred and fifty meters of road, full sanitary storm, water main upgrades. And it would be one lift of hot mix in twenty twenty two and a second lift in twenty twenty three. So the job wasn't included in the twenty two budget. But like I said, West Gray is kind of moving it up, they're trying to get it done this year. And it's on, from our point of view, it's seventy six percent of it is funded through development charges. So it's a relatively easy move up for us. And we also include in the report the latest estimate and the from the ten year plan, which was in May. The prices, the latest cost estimate was cheaper than that. But of course, this year, we've seen higher prices in our tenders so far, especially with underground work and pipe. So we'll see, we added some buffer consultant or West Gray's consultant added a buffer. And we're fairly comfortable that the prices are okay, at least with our work especially. The road is recommended to be closed and West Gray's targeting a tender and an October completion. And we'll be bringing back another report in or later for the tender award.
Thank you. Are there any questions, councillor Silver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'm glad that seventy six is percent is coming from the development charges. However, I'll note that the in the ten year capital plan, at that point, sixty six percent was coming from development charges and that's now gone up by ten percent. I think that's a good, good news story for taxpayers, but I'm just wondering how how that's possible to change the percentage of the part to be paid by development charges? Have we changed the assumption on, you know, existing benefiting?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I know we have made some changes because of the new development charge by law. But as far as the the specifics of it, I I think fine answered, I could get that question, that answer for you more specifically.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Robinson, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I I just want to say thank you to Pat and his staff for bringing this report forward. The project really has been expedited due to an increased development activity in West Gray. And I really appreciate Pat and his staff working with West Gray staff to address a timeframe in a very positive way. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I don't see any other hands, so perhaps it's time to call the question on the motion before us. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing no hands, that is carried. We move on to item D, sticking with West Gray. We're now talking about the We're now talking about the structure nine dash three five four replacement. That puts Pat again on deck. This item's been moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Matt. Pat, over to you.
Okay, yeah, this is the award of structure nine dash three five four and gray nine. You'll see the map on page 17 for where it is. So it was built in 1940. It's our lowest, one of our lowest indexes in the county at 14.45 out of 100. Originally, we discussed it for 2021. We only had one bid. For a variety of reasons, we decided to delay it till 2022, put the project back in the budget. And now we've had four bids come in, which we're very happy with. A lot of the items in here are lump sum, so they're kind of, you know, it was up to the contractors to figure out what the sum of this stuff is going to cost. So we're not expecting huge overruns because, you know, we're not necessarily measuring every item that goes in. So we felt comfortable with a smaller contingency of 2%. The project is still over budget by $291,000. Now, we've had some other projects that have come in since that haven't come to this committee yet that are kind of covering that off. But as per this report, we're going to cover the the deficit through other surpluses or failing that, the Canada Community Building Fund Reserve, which was formerly Gas Tax. So we're recommending the award to Rubos Farm Service. They did a covert for us last year, and they've done a lot of work for us over the years. So we're very comfortable with with the quality work that they provided us.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Seeing no hands, we'll call the question on the motion before us to receive this report, the tender results, and to award the tender and to fund the project deficit. Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item four E, dealing with the mental health and addictions task force terms of reference that will put Tara deck. This item's been moved by Counselor Body and seconded by Counselor Burle. Tara, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report is before you today as a result of direction to staff to bring forward terms of reference for mental health and addictions task force. There's a growing sense of urgency to address the mental health and substance use concerns across Gray County.
Tara, I'm going to interrupt you. I apologize. For me anyways, your sound is a little bit sort of wavy, so it floats in and out.
Okay.
Others may be finding that. If you could come a little closer to the mic, it may help. Go ahead and test again and see if we.
Is that better?
Yes, it is better, actually.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I will start from the beginning. This report is before you today as a result of direction to staff to bring forward terms of reference for a mental health and addictions task force. There's a growing sense of urgency to address the mental health and substance use concerns across Gray County. As well as factors that contribute to mental health and substance use have been amplified by the pandemic. The task force will examine the current system of treatment and support that exists for those suffering from mental health and substance substance use disorders. It will create a local response that identifies priorities to help in the development of mental health supports and harm reduction strategies. The terms of reference proposed that the committee consists of the following members: Phil Dodd from Keystone Child, Family and Youth Services, Clark McFarland from CMHA, Naomi Vauden from Gray Bruce Health Services, and a member of the peer advisory network from the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy, who will be confirmed at a later date, following further discussion at the task force table, as well as a member of Gray Bruce Public Health Unit. And since the time that the agenda has been published, has been confirmed that Dr. Era is able to fill that role. The terms of reference is drafted, and the motion before you recommend that five county counselors plus the warden also sit on the task force. However, expressions of interest were received from seven counselors. Staff are asking today if council wishes to expand the political representation to seven counselors and appoint all of those who have expressed an interest in sitting on the task force. Counselors Leary, Burley, Keveney, Columbus, Mackey, and Hutchinson, as well as Counselor Carlton, are all interested in the appointment. Should county councilists wish to consider an increased membership, a motion to amend the pending motion to reflect that change would be in order. You'll also notice that the recommendation proposes for the task, excuse me, for the task force to meet prior to county council's adoption of today's minutes. So staff are looking at dates for that first meeting for the group, and we'll confirm that following today's meeting. So Barb and Kim and I are able to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much, Tara. Madam CIO, is there anything that you want to add to the recommendation, the suggestion that we change the county council membership from five to seven?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. No, I think that, given the strong interest of this and the and the wide scope of topics that we might be covering here, I think it's it's a good idea to let everybody who wants to be part of the conversations to be at the table, especially when we're doing so much virtually right now.
Very good. So with that said, it might be then appropriate, I see your hand, Counselor Swaber, and I'll come right to you. But it might be appropriate for someone, Tara, to make a motion that we at least put on the table the change from five to seven. So do we want to deal with that first before we have questions, or Tara should we be dealing with the questions first?
You could probably do either, either way, but maybe maybe we'll speak to the questions first and then go from there.
Very good. Counselor Swaber, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And so last meeting, when we talked about the entertain the motion to form this committee, I expressed a concern that, you know, this committee worked with the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. And I don't see any reference to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan in the terms of reference. So I'm just wondering, did we consult with the Coordinator of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan? Or because as I understand, they've got an addiction and substance abuse table, working group put together already. So just wondering if we consulted with the and how this is going to be coordinated with the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, because you know, I certainly, we don't want us to be seen to be turning our back on the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan and which we did with Bruce County in concert and you know, going and doing our own thing outside of that.
Well, I see Barb's hand up. Barb?
Thank you for the question through you, Mr. Warden. That's a great question, and we certainly are not doing it in isolation. I sit at the steering committee for both the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy as well as the Community Safety and Wellbeing, and in addition to the Poverty Task Force. So we see all of these tables as being intrinsic to this work, and there are certainly definitely direct connections. And no duplication is intended, and I think the direct line, having myself at that table as well as Anne Marie at many of these same tables, will be able to ensure that the work is actually leveraging one another, and we're levers to one another's goals. So thank you for that, though.
Thank you, Counselor Swaber. Anything else?
Yes, thank you for that answer, and I would hope that we would make that known to the the leadership of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan as they they might be a little bit feeling left out of this process.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess my question is for Kim. And it's just in regards, Kim, there have been some valuable members of the the community that have reached out in regards to wanting to participate. Do you envision the the task force being able to invite those individuals to speak specifically on certain topics?
Through you, Mr. Warden, and thanks for that, Counselor Mackey. Yes, I think one of the first orders of business for the task force will be to discuss a work plan. And as we've indicated here, the intent, given where we are with the with the council cycle, is that we want to have monthly meetings, and we want this to be a very focused group of discussions over the next few months. So if we put together a work plan with everybody's input into the topics that we think will help us put together the best recommendations, then we can invite the various people who have indicated that they did wish to speak and had information that they felt was important for the task force to consider. So we'll try and and work our way through that and have a good initial discussion, make sure that we get those people to the table.
Good, Counselor Mackey. Good. Counselor Boarded now.
Thank you. Further to Counselor Mackey, which is an excellent question. We've had members of the public have reached out. So as we're putting the terms of reference together, I guess, I know it's early stages. I think it's so important, based on the regionality of the region, as well as the I was pleasantly surprised at the public input already wanting to help. Usually, we have to go out looking for people, people coming forward, wanting to be able to part of this. So I just echo what the previous counselor said in regards to making sure we get that that grassroots public level included, because that's I think that's going to be paramount as part of the success, as we see, you know, from from the administration point and the governance point, but also the sort of the grassroots boots on the ground. So I think that's a very important part that we need to put forward as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boarded now. And I would just say, to what you have said, and Counselor Mackey, I had a number of people reach out to me expressing interest in contributing to this task force. So it's it's very good. We've got public interest, and certainly we've got council interest. So I'll turn attention back to the council interest now. Is there anyone who wants to put the motion at least for debate on the floor of moving the counselor participation from five members to seven? Counselor Burle?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would gladly make that motion.
Excellent. I'm looking for a seconder, and the seconder is Counselor Hutchinson. Discussion now. And if there, oh, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Ward. Next. I'm happy to see that there's this amount of interest to be on the committee. However, I do have a question with regards to does having seven people on the committee slow down the work of the committee, first of all, because we have noticed that it's and sometimes it's just hard to get a time where you can get even five people together. So with seven people, does that get affected, slow down the work of the community, and thereby reduce the effect the committee can have on on what we're trying to achieve here? We have other committees of council where we have heard limits and how many, how many members of council are on that. At the end of the day, one way or the other, I would like for us to reflect on, you know, shouldn't this be similar to that? I get it that there's a lot of interest, but there's also significant interest for other other committees, and we just go ahead and have an election for that. It's it's nothing personal. It's just committees work best when they're smaller, more agile. So I just want us to reflect on that, perhaps.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, any comments on on that? I think there is a bit of a challenge, isn't there, on more members you have in terms of organizing a meeting?
It it can be at times. Though, looking ahead to possible meeting dates for the task force, I were thinking that if we keep it consistent, so for example, the thought was this committee could perhaps meet the third February, sorry, the third Tuesday of every month, with the exception of February, of course, at the same time, and I don't think those dates conflict with any local meeting. So I I think there is a little bit concern that there might be some conflicts down the road, but I think overall the hope is that there wouldn't be any concern with the committee slowing down because of the increased membership.
Very good. Madam CIO, I saw your hand up. What are you satisfied with, given by Tara?
No, that's good. We did have a conversation about how best to do this, given that then that there's a fair number of folks who want or need to be at the table, including people like Alison Gauvier from Mental Health and Addictions piece, and Darren Clog from our paramedics. So we are coordinating a large number of people to participate in this. I think hopefully people do see this as a priority, and we understand best efforts, and then we'll help. If somebody needs to miss a meeting, we'll make sure that we get them caught up.
Right, as long as we can get form.
Yeah.
Counselor Keveney, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I was just going to add, as the precedent, that I think council will remember the Economic Development Committee and more members of council came forward and wanted to participate in that committee, and council agreed at that time to to allow everyone who wanted to be involved in that committee to be a member, and I'm hoping that the same will happen here, because the work is so important. And I think all of us who put our names forward recognize that this is, as has been stated, a priority, and that we will clear our schedules to make sure we attend those meetings.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hutchinson, you're next.
Thank you, Warden. I was just sitting here looking at our council schedule, and it appears that I do land on the third Tuesday quite often with West Gray's council, so somewhere at 6:00 PM or whatnot, but you know, again, there's more than enough on there, so I will certainly attend wherever I can. Thank you.
Staff will work the best we can with all the members to make sure it works best and if people are, we can get.
Yeah, Tara, we need you right up close to the mic.
Sorry. And staff will work the best we can with all members to make sure that as many people can attend those meetings as possible.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. With that said, perhaps it's time to call the question on the motion before us to move the council participation from five members to seven. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? I do not see any hands. So with that said, it is Carrie. We're on now to the main motion. I suppose as amended. Are we ready to call the question there, or is there any further discussion to be had? So no hands. I will call the question on the main motion. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? No hand showing. That too is Carrie. Thank you very much. It looks like this will be a very active task force. All right, we are on to adjournment now, I believe, in this. Other business. Item number five, is there any other business? I do not think that there is any. And number six is any notices of motion? We are on all hands, so that does take us to adjournment.
Sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor Desai.
Yes, I see him now as well.
Thank you, Warden. It's not a notice motion. It's more of a other business item, I guess. I know following the last meeting, the CIO had sent out an email with regards to meeting in person. I'm just wondering if we should expect an email or if the CIO has somewhat of an update at this point, or if we should, if I should just let it move to adjournment and wait for the email.
Madam Deputy Clerk, did you want to weigh in there?
I will. I think Kim has something she can add to that.
Thanks so much for the question. Thanks, everybody, for your willingness to continue to work to meet virtually one more time. We are, we are looking at moving back into the the hybrid model for our next meeting. So certainly we'll be watching carefully what the province's direction is, if there are any changes or anything with regard to capacity limits or that might impact our meetings. But the idea is to, at our next meeting, allow people to then return to chambers. So we will send out an email and just confirm everything after the province's next update shortly.
Thank you, Madam CIO. Where are you? Have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was just going to respond to Counselor Swaber's question on the DC charges for Gray Road 27. The new DC study shows that 76% of the project is eligible for DCs, and when you run the calculations, that matches the amount that's quoted in the report.
Thank you for that.
Very good. Is there any other other business? And no notices of motion? That brings us then to adjournment. It is therefore moved by Counselor Burley. Most surprised. So that brings us then to adjournment. It is therefore moved by Counselor Burling, no surprise, and Counselor Hutchinson, uh, that we adjourn. Anyone opposed? No hands, wonderful. Thank you very much. It's now about 20.
Everyone, bye-bye.
John, have a good day, everyone.